Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this evening's Lebanon Plan Commission meeting. First order of business, I will call us to order, and Kelly, if you could call the role.
Okay. Dan Beishor?
Here.
Diane Scott?
Here.
Kevin Krulik, absent. Corey Coons?
Here.
Ryan Tandy, absent. Keith Campbell?
Here.
Heather Shauer?
Here.
Rebecca Stanton?
Here.
Lori Gross?
Here.
Thank you very much, Kelly. Second easiest order of business this evening is the approval of the minutes. I believe we all received a copy of those minutes. I would entertain a motion.
A motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve?
Second.
And we have a second. All those in favor, please signify with an eye.
Eye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Next up on the list, we have a Plan Commission Order 2023-02, and I believe we have Mr. Ben Bonträger coming up to tell us a little bit about this one.
Good evening, Plan Commission. I'll just give you just a real quick overview of this. We've done these a couple of times before. Anytime there is an amendment or a new TIFF district established, part of the process is that there is a Plan Commission order that needs to be approved by the Plan Commission, essentially suggesting that that TIFF district is consistent with the plans for development for the City of Lebanon. So, in this case, if they want to bring the screen up, we are looking at actually carving out a new allocation area out of our existing TIFF district. This is actually the railroad track. State Road 39 is just off the screen to the west here, and then a couple of properties north is where the fieldhouse is developing along the interstate. So, we're looking south on State Road 39. This is the Cedars of Lebanon Business Park that's located here, and we are amending the TIFF district to create a new allocation area for this development as part of the process to establish some incentives for that development. So, again, as I mentioned, the Plan Commission order is essentially confirming that this conforms with the plans for development for the City of Lebanon, which it does. This is a property that has been zoned for industrial use for some time and is master planned for industrial use, so this does conform with the plans of development for the city, and we'd recommend approval of this Plan Commission order. That's all I got.
Good deal. Do we have any questions from the Commission in terms of this order? Rob, do we need to read it in, or are we good just with the... Okay, perfect. So, if there are no questions, I would entertain a motion on Plan Commission Order 2023-02.
A motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve?
Second.
And a second from Lori. Let's go ahead, and do we roll call? We're gonna roll call, aren't we? Thanks, Kelly.
Okay. Dan Beishor?
Yes.
Diane Scott?
Yes.
Corey Coons?
Yes.
Keith Campbell?
Yes.
Heather Shauer?
Yes.
Rebecca Stanton?
Yes.
Lori Gross?
Yes.
Good deal. So, that one is approved. Now, we're gonna move on to old business. Under old business, we have an item that was continued from July, and Mr. Matt Reynolds is gonna tell us a little on that one.
Good evening, Board. We have an item for you tonight that many of you may remember from the June Plan Commission meeting. We'll do a quick recap. We've got some new information, but I just wanna refresh you and the thousands of people watching at home on what we're talking about tonight. If we pull up our screen here, I get you allocate... Notice where we're at. We are on the west side of town, just off of State Road 32. This is Sam Ralston Road that runs along the eastern property line, the White Castle, the Quality Inn and Suites, and then Menards is just off the screen to the northwest here. The applicant tonight is proposing an approximately 6,000-square-foot speculative commercial building that you can see on your screen here. We have a five-space, five-tenant building that the applicant's proposing with the associated parking, a pickup window along one side, along the north side of the building, and a drive-through window along the south side of the building. The applicant is proposing all the appropriate landscaping. As you can see, we have both parking lot interior and perimeter landscaping, as well as the buffer landscaping around the outside of the property. We have the appropriate amount of parking spaces. They are proposing 28 spaces, two of them handicapped, and then a couple of specific motorcycle parking spots along the north side of the parking lot here. So, if you guys remember this from last month, one of the... Two of the concerns that we had, one was off-site drainage. So, we have drainage that is being proposed. The drainage would actually go north along the neighboring property, under their drive, and then connecting to a creek along the north side to that legal drain. So, there was some concern about the location of that drainage system there, the stormwater drainage. Since then, the applicant, with their engineer and with the approval of the neighboring property and the Boone County Surveyors' Office, have come up with a plan to actually pipe the stormwater runoff versus an open ditch. So, instead of an open swale, the water will be piped from the subject property through the neighboring property underneath the drive and into the appropriate swale or detention system along the north side there. So, that was one of the concerns that this Commission had last month. They would like to see that get resolved, and they have done so, presented that to the neighbor, as well as to the City of Lebanon Stormwater and Drainage Board. The second item that... Excuse me. That wasn't available last month, that we have this month, is renderings. So, we do have... The applicant was able to put together renderings of what the proposed elevations were gonna look like. I'm gonna pull up my notes here so that I can make sure that I'm giving the details. So, as you can see, a variety of different products are being used on the front facade of the building: stone veneer, wood siding, fiber cement panels. And because this is a multi-tenant building, each tenant space has a distinct entrance along the front, as you can see here. So, it does separate, allows some differentiation, and staff believes that this is a great representation of what we're looking for with some of these commercial spaces, to add that nice architectural elements to the front facades of these buildings. And then we can also see on the south elevation here, it's not just a block-stone building that there is, you know, stone veneer and different varying types of elements along the both north and south sides of the building. As a reminder from last month, this application did undergo technical advisory committee review. City of Lebanon Utilities Sewer and Water Division, the Electric Division were able to present their comments, and most of those have been adequately addressed. City of Lebanon Stormwater also weighed in, Lebanon Fire, Police Department, the City of Lebanon Engineering Department submitted his comments, and then the planning staff did undergo the review of the development plan as presented and the civil drawings. And everything demonstrated compliance with the planned business commercial zoning district in which this is being proposed in. So, when we talk about zoning development standards, lot size has been met, appropriate front, rear, side setbacks have been met, all of the parking requirements, as I touched on. The applicant has not yet proposed a lighting plan, but when they... Before they submit four permits, they will have to submit an appropriate photometric plan that does meet all UDO standards. Same goes with a signage package. We have not yet received a signage package simply because it's a speculative building. We don't know what the signage plans are, but before any new signs can be installed and before permits are issued for signage, we would require an appropriate signage plan. And then I did touch on the landscaping standards. The applicant's provided a landscaping plan that does meet all the standards of the Unified Development Ordinance. So, in review of the submitted development plan as presented, the City of Lebanon planning staff does find compliance with the UDO and for the subject site, and we do recommend approval of the subject development plan contingent on the following three conditions: One, that the applicant adequately addresses any remaining City of Lebanon Technical Advisory Committee comments prior to the application for any building permits or site improvements; that the applicant submits a lighting and photometric plan that meets all standards of the UDO prior to submission for permits or site improvements or building construction; and then lastly, that the applicant submits a signage package that meets all applicable UDO standards for approval prior to submission for permits for the signage. The applicant and the engineer are here tonight to answer any questions that you have, if you have any, and I'd be happy to answer some, too.
Yeah. Commission, any questions for Matt?
I do have a question, and this can be just even in general. When we talk about the landscape commitments, so when the landscaping is put in, what kind of responsibility does this owner have on maintaining that? Because, you know, there's a lot of plants going in and trees, and if they're not maintained, they're gonna die, and then they're not even gonna look good. So, what is... Since I'm newer to this committee, like what, from my understanding, what is required to be done once they're in? If they all start to die off, are they responsible to oversee that and make sure that they are kept up?
Sure. Sure. The answer to your question is yes. The applicant, the developer, is responsible for maintaining the landscaping that's been presented. So, within, you know, a year or two, if something dies, they'd be responsible for replacing that. We don't have standards currently that indicate that they must be maintained or shrubs have to be trimmed to a certain way, but we are undergoing a complete UDO rewrite, which should hopefully be before you, before the end of the year, and we are looking at adding those standards, both for commercial and residential properties, to require maintenance of trees and shrubs. So, right now, grass and weeds...
And weeds.
Yeah. Grass and weeds, we currently restrict, you know, have to be cut to a certain level, but we would like to see an enhanced standard to not only require the commercial developers to replace the trees and shrubs that they've agreed to plant should they fail, but also require that they be maintained throughout the course of the development. Like I said, we will be rewriting those UDO standards. We are in the process. I think we're under the third review of the draft of the UDO, so hopefully in the next couple of months, it'll be coming to you guys for your approval. But the applicant is committing to X number of trees and shrubs on the site and will be required to maintain that number of trees and shrubs.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Matt? Would the applicant care to say anything?
I think if I've covered it, if you have any questions for me, I'll be happy to answer them. Thank you.
All right. Good deal. So, with that, this is a public hearing, so I will officially open up the public hearing in regards to docket 23-48, which is the AAA development project. If you have any comments, please feel free to step to the microphone. Oh, very quick movements to said microphone. We'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And any additional follow-up from the Commission? I would entertain a motion on docket 23-48.
I'm with the approval of docket 23-48 as presented.
All right. We've got a motion to approve with the contingencies included. You have a second?
Second.
Second. Kelly, will you take the role?
Yes.
Dan Beishor? Diane Scott? Corey Coons?
Yes.
Keith Campbell?
Yes.
Heather Shauer?
Yes.
Rebecca Stanton?
Yes.
Lori Gross?
Yes.
Good deal. That's approved. Thank you very much.
Appreciate the question.
Absolutely.
Corey, Diane doesn't have a microphone. Yeah, okay. Now she does.
All been taken care of. We're one mic short on this end.
I know.
We had to do some maneuvering. I apologize for that, folks. I believe that wraps up our old business, so we will move right into the new business. First item we have up is docket 23-53, and Ben, if you could give us a little bit of insight into the Birchwood Drive property?
Sure. Let me get a couple of things pulled up here, so we can walk through this. Just about there. One more item that I wanna show you. Okay. This item for you. All of our projects are a little bit unique. This one's got a couple of unique characteristics to it as well. This is actually a site that is just adjacent to Interstate 65. You've got the Carpenter Realty Office to the west, and then you've got, actually, the three lots that are shown as vacant right now are actually three residential homes directly to the east of it, and then you've actually got a model home down here for Hallmark Homes down here at the south end. So, you're in an area where we've got commercial uses to the west and then transitioning to residential uses to the east, and we've got this property here right in the middle that's currently zoned planned business commercial. And over the last few years, it's been on the market, and I've had a few people reach out about trying to figure out how to use this from a commercial perspective. You can see here, there's detention on the site. This is actually detention for the Carpenter Realty Office to the west. Everybody's trying to figure out how to get a commercial building on the site with proper parking, proper access out to Birchwood Drive, and it's just been kind of a challenge to figure out how to get all that to work with the drainage that's already there and additional detention to be required for any other commercial use. More recently, then, the applicant Davis Building Group came to us with an idea, actually similar to what Hallmark is doing, is they would like to build a residential home on this property and then use it for their foreseeable future as essentially a standalone model home. It would not necessarily be staffed 100% of the time, but they could meet clients there and show them one of their models and talk a little bit about what sort of amenities and features are available. And so, what they want to do here is actually rezone the property from commercial zoning to a residential zoning district that would allow them to construct the home. Then actually, then they would end up going to the Board of Zoning Appeals for a use range, allow them essentially to use it for a semi-permanent model home for a period of time. But then it will allow them, at some point in the future, if they decided they didn't need the model home anymore, then they could turn around and sell it as a home for somebody to live in. Thus, the reason for the residential zoning classification. So, this gives you an idea where the property's located. Let me pull up, and here's their thoughts on how they would like to lay out the site. Certainly, they're showing a driveway coming in off of Birchwood Drive, so there's some reshaping of this detention pond that's gonna be necessary to continue to accommodate the property to the west, also provide detention for what additional impervious service are adding to this site. So, this would be a residential model home, and then they're providing a small little parking lot for their clients as they're coming, and they're meeting an agent from the company Davis Building Group. So, it is a... It is, right now, would be a model home with a small parking lot for that, but then it could be transitioned back to residential pretty easy in the future when it's necessary. And then they did also provide me with a rendering showing the model home that they're interested in building out here, so that gives you an idea of the home that they're looking to construct on this site. Certainly, if it was a commercial property, it would still meet all of our material standards and requirements since it's all masonry, but that just gives you an idea what they're hoping to build there. And then, as I mentioned, this is a rezone, so this is a process that would require Plan Commission review and recommendation, and then that would be forwarded then to the council who would ultimately consider adoption of the rezone via ordinance. So, the process would require you... This group to review this and provide a recommendation on that rezone request. So, as part of that, there is a process, criteria to review. First one is consistency with the comprehensive plan, and actually, the subject property is designated for commercial on the comprehensive plan. I think I was really just looking, when we did that comprehensive plan, Matt was really looking at the existing zoning of the property, but this is in an area where it's an area of transition. The areas to the west are all commercial, the areas to the east are all residential. So, we set the line... We set the line in one location as being this being commercial, but it could very easily be moved and allow this to be residential without doing any major alterations of the comprehensive plan. Future land use map, so that's what we're looking at in this case, is because it's an area in transition while it does not necessarily meet the designation for a commercial land use designation, it is consistent with the goals and objectives of the Lebanon Comprehensive Plan, and it's an infill location where something like this is... It can be accommodated here. Criteria number two is compatibility with adjacent land uses. As I mentioned, we're kind of in an area where there's both commercial and residential. So, north of the property, it's zoned planned business commercial, but it is residential uses. South is the interstate. West is zoned commercial, and it is used for a real estate office, and east of it is zoned residential, and it is used for residential uses. So, staff has found that the subject rezoning, in this case, they're looking for a rezon to SF2, single-family residential, is compatible with existing uses and zoning. Criteria number three is desirability of land use. This rezone would allow them to construct the single-family home that will use for a period of time as a sales office. The subject property is in an area that transitions from commercial to the west and residential uses to the east, so the proposed zoning district and use would not only be compatible with surrounding land uses, but would be a desirable land use given the existing pattern of development. Given that conclusion, staff has found that the subject rezoning to SF2 is a desirable land use within the proposed area. Criteria number four is impact on property values. We've determined the proposed residential structure is consistent with others in the vicinity, and the proposed use of the structure of the sales office and model home is low intensity and will not have a negative impact on surrounding neighbors, either commercial or residential. So, we have determined, then, that the subject rezoning to SF2 would have no negative impact on property values in the area. And criteria number five is responsible growth, and we've concluded that the area surrounding the subject property is a mix of both commercial and residential uses. Given the size of the subject site, which restricts any significant potential for commercial use, it would be most responsible to rezone the site for residential purposes to allow it to be developed. And the conclusion, then, is the subject rezoning to SF2 represents responsible growth and development. And given the response of those five criteria, staff has determined, in review of the rezoning request to single-family residential SF2, Lebanon planning staff recommends this petition be forwarded by the Plan Commission to the common council with a favorable recommendation. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Ben. Any questions from the Commission? For Ben?
So, how are they going to put the drive in? I see it's going over the waterway. Are they gonna...
Yeah.
They're gonna back off the pond, the retention pond, and fill it in?
Yeah. If they want to bring the screen back up, I can kinda go through what they likely will have to do. So, most likely, because right now, the water runs off of that parking lot that's to the west through a swale into the pond right here. My guess is what they'll likely end up doing is piping from that parking lot under their driveway and then just reshape that pond to make up for the volume that they're gonna have to fill in. So, it's a relatively straightforward calculation, but it is something that they'll just have to probably end up piping that water underneath their driveway, so they can accommodate their driveway and then just reshaping this to...
I'm familiar with that land. What happens if they decide that they do wanna sell it and they're unable to sell it? Are they gonna maintain it as long as it sits?
I'll let the applicant talk about kinda what their plans are in terms of timing for the model home and when they might be interested in selling it. I think they have some ideas. It will be a model home for a period of time, but I'll let them talk about what their plans are.
Any other questions for Ben?
Yeah, Ben. Since this is a transition between, you know, commercial and sitting there with the realtor over there on the west side, is there any transition landscaping we should probably require along that driveway or anything?
Um...
That west side of the property?
Yeah. I mean, we would typically require between a commercial and a residential property a buffer yard.
Right.
They haven't provided necessarily, but that's something they could certainly look at doing in the space between the driveway, depending on what, you know, if there's drainage or utilities there, but they might be able to provide some landscaping in there to differentiate between the two.
Okay.
Typically, what you see is the commercial property providing the buffer.
Right.
Residential, this is residential's after the fact in this case, so...
This one's kind of a mix right now, because it's commercial for now and then residential later.
Yeah. For now, there won't be anybody living there, so...
Like, is there a way to have the driveway shifted a little bit so there's room for a buffer, like when they want to...
There's a pond there. No, there's a pond there.
Yeah. Yeah. I can let them talk about that. There's, I mean, certainly, there's already a few feet there anyway, and really, what we look for is a five-foot. You need at least five feet to do a, you know, like a parking lot perimeter-type landscaping. I don't think it would be real difficult for them to get a few more feet to be able to make a planting strip in there that would help out to some extent with some kind of landscaping there between the two. And they may have a land... They haven't provided, but they may have a landscape package they're considering out here anyway, but I'll let them talk about what they might do to accommodate that.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the Commission? Would the applicant care to come forward?
Evening, committee members. My name is Paul Carroll, represent Davis Building Group. I've got the President Brad Davis, as well as the VP of Land Development, Bruce Fagan here, if there are any questions specifically that they can ask, answer. With respect to this project, Mr. Bonträger did an excellent job. We're looking at building a kind of a commercial model home, design center, sales office at this location. It'll be residential in character. Davis has two product lines. One is more of the community builds. Davis develops an entire community and builds housing on those communities. We also do custom and semi-custom lines of homes. The expectation with this site is to build one of the more... We call it OYL, or on-your-lot, model homes, and establish kind of a permanent model home at this location. I don't believe we've prepared landscaping packages yet on this, but certainly what we're looking for is, you know, the most appealing home that we can put out there. And obviously, at some point, and not in the near future, but at some point, Davis may look to sell this as a house, and certainly wouldn't object to providing buffer landscaping if that's a requirement. But I won't take up too much of your time. If you have any questions, again, Brad Davis and Bruce Fagan from Davis Homes are here. I'm sure one of us can answer any questions you have.
Thanks, Paul. Any questions from the Commission? Applicant? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. With that, again, this is a public hearing, so I will officially open us up for public hearing. If you have any comments, please feel free to step to the microphone, limit to three minutes if possible.
My name is Kojow Benji, and I'm one of the homeowners on the east side of that property. I have a few questions about this rezoning. On that... On this... That pound has a berm, and I have a question about it. Can you did the berm to me to see that I... To me, so that I can... I will be guaranteed that it will not be removed or any modification done to it? I need a reassurance that my land will not flood, because if that pound get removed, every... Or what around the area will be on my property. To ensure my privacy also, can you say with certainty that there will not be any second story added to this office or a home that is going to be built? Are you willing to give me a right of use to put a six-feet fence? For the berm, the land behind that area is higher than my property right now. I have two little daughters that play out in the backyard, and I have... And I'm not wanting someone on that property to be able to watch their every move or to be able to look into my bedroom window from a second story. And also, I was thinking about is if that property is sold as a home, what assurance I have that it's not gonna be changed to something else later? Once it's zoned to residential, the owner can do anything about it, what he wants, can do anything he wants to be with that land? Those are my questions. Thank you.
And we will address those, but we'll keep the public hearing open for a moment. Anyone else wishing to make comment under the public hearing? All right. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing portion, and then we can address a couple of those, I believe, relatively easy. So, the first question was the berm on the eastern edge. So, the eastern portion of that property should be untouched, correct?
Yeah. I don't... I could let the applicant touch on a little bit, but yeah, I don't think they're gonna have to make any modifications. think they're gonna have to make any modifications along the eastern property line. This would all be just to, obviously, they're gonna have to put a building pad back in there where the house and the parking lot's gonna go, but it should not impact that eastern property line. In terms of drainage, all their water, they would be directing to this pond, so it also should not be draining to the east there either. It'd all be directed towards this pond.
And then, maybe, maybe a good point in here is kinda the steps that we're in. So this step is the potential rezone.
Yes.
Which is gonna take it to a single-family. For any alterations on the property, that has an additional step then, correct? If they're gonna, so to make the alteration to the pond, they're gonna have to go before another entity?
Yeah, they would have to submit construction plans to our office, and that, those would be reviewed by our consultant that does all our drainage reviews, to make sure they're still properly accommodating the Carpenter Realty office to the west, but then also accommodating any additional runoffs created by the new home. Make sure that it's all going to that pond and not running off into those neighboring properties. So that would all be part of an additional review. When they bring in the construction plans for the home, they will have to look at that detention pond and make sure that that all still works correctly the way it does now, and will continue to work correctly with the modifications they're making to the site.
And the next was in regards to the fence, which, to my knowledge, any property is able to construct a fence, the rear fence, in this case, it would be a rear fence, correct? I would imagine?
For his property.
Yeah, for that property, which I think the UDO states, as long as we meet setbacks, it can be up to...
Yeah, unless there is an easement back there, which I don't think there is, they should be able to build a fence all the way onto the property line with the neighboring property owner's permission. So if he, if you wanted to build, the neighbor wanted to build a fence on their property, they would just need to contact our office and get a permit, and they should be able to do that. I don't know that the applicant is planning on putting a fence on their development, not necessarily planning to do that, but certainly if the neighboring property wanted a fence in his backyard, now that there is a pond and additional use there, he certainly would be able to do that.
Yep. And then, in terms of the second story, again there, I think that's, so the question before us tonight is the rezone piece, the building fitting on the property, that is a separate discussion, correct?
Yeah, I guess if there's a concern about it being two-story, certainly all of our residential zoning districts allow two-story homes.
Right.
If the desire is to keep it something lower, so that it's not as imposing to the neighboring homes, which are all single-story, you could certainly restrict it that. I don't think they intend to do anything.
A currently a ranch home.
Yeah, they're proposing a single-story home on the property, and I wouldn't think that they would come back and change that at some point in the future, but they're proposing a single-story home on the property right now, based on that image I showed you.
Yep.
Hey, Ben, I have a question for you. I thought when we, a few years ago, we passed an ordinance that said that fences had to be three foot off of the boundary line.
So the ordinance says that they have to be three foot off the boundary line unless you have permission from the neighboring property owner to allow it to be on the property.
Right, I understand that.
Yeah. So that's what the ordinance says, either three feet off the property line, or you can go on the property line with the neighbor's permission.
You get the written permission from them, right?
Yep, you'd have to have, you'd have to have written permission from the neighbor to go on the property line.
That's what I thought, just wanted to make sure.
And that's really just because we don't want to require somebody to have to pay $5,000 to get a survey every time they want to put a fence on the property line, so if we at least have the permission from the neighbor, and they're relatively close, based on aerial photography, as long as they have permission and they're pretty close, we're okay with that. So we don't want somebody to have to double the cost of their fence just to get a survey to locate the property line.
So to circle it back around to the second story, the intent is a single story. If we fast-forward a number of years down the road, they sell the property, the next owner wants to put an additional story on, they would then be required to come before the planning office, and there's another set of standards that it has to meet at that point. If it doesn't meet that, it could come before a body like this for a variance, or the, actually, zoning appeals for the variance. So, just to kinda outline that a little bit. Any other questions or comments for Ben in regards to the rezoning application?
Didn't he also ask a question about if the purpose of the property were to change down the road? That was an additional question.
Yeah, so in terms of, if it was rezoned residential, it would have to be a single-family residential use or something permitted in that zoning district, which, other than residential uses, there are very few things that it could be outside of that. What we would do to allow the temporary use for the sales office is it would actually be a use variance, which pretty much says that is the only thing you're able to use it for, and we'd restrict it just to that. So that wouldn't allow any other commercial uses to go there without going back to some board and neighbors being notified. So in this case, they would be rezoned to residential, they'd get specific permission to use it for a model home. If it was no longer a model home, it could only be a use permitted in the residential zoning district, which is primarily residential uses.
Yep, which arguably, and in my opinion, is probably more restrictive than where it sits today.
That's...
Because today, it could be a number of different things.
It could be any number of commercial uses right now, so this would actually restrict it significantly to just residential uses by, with this rezone.
Any other questions or comments? All right, so then, we would look for a recommendation from this body in regards to docket 23-53, and again, this is either a favorable or unfavorable recommendation from this body forward for the rezoning.
I make a motion...
Go ahead.
I make a motion to send a rezoning request, single-family residential SF2, to forward that to the common council with a favorable recommendation.
Got a motion?
A second.
With a second? All right, let's go ahead, and do we want to roll, or do we want to roll call it? Sounds good. Thanks, Kelly.
Dan Beishor?
Yes.
Diane Scott?
Yes.
Corey Coontz?
Yes.
Keith Campbell?
Yes.
Heather Schaller?
Yes.
Rebecca Stanton?
Yes.
Lori Gross?
Yes.
Very good. Motion does carry. Thank you very much. That is number one from the new business under our belt. Let's move on to docket 23-54, which is Beezer Homes requesting a PUD preliminary plan. Ben, you got this one?
Yep, thank you, Mr. Coontz. This is step two in a process to develop the property. If they want to bring up the screen, we'll give you, just remind everybody where we're talking. This is at the north end of the community. 300 North is the southern boundary, State Road 39 is the eastern boundary, and then the CSX Railroad is the western boundary, so that gives you an idea generally where we're at, just to the south, and off the screen is with the hospital, so right at the north end of the community where it sits today. This came before you, I believe, a couple months ago for a PUD rezone, and what a PUD rezone is, essentially where you, we work with the developer, in this case, because there's multiple different product types, both residential and commercial, makes most sense to PUD, because you essentially write the rules associated with each product that you're bringing to the table. So whereas if we're going with one of our standard zoning districts, you wouldn't be able to do all the uses that are proposed in here. So the PUD allows the flexibility for you to write specific standards for each use, and allows you to do a mixed-use type of development like this. So this is the overall site, it's about 140 acres, I believe, give or take, and the PUD rezone did, was before this body a couple months ago, received a favorable recommendation forwarded to the council, and the council did adopt that PUD rezone at a meeting a few weeks ago. So this is the next step in the process, which is the preliminary plan, which, like a primary plat, you start getting into road layouts, lot layouts, a little further information on the amenities and landscaping, and then also the product types, which we'll go through a little bit more here in a moment. So let me pull up, and just point out that this preliminary plan is only for a portion of the property, which is the single-family and duplex or duets portion of the property, which you see represented here in the orange and yellow colors. The red, reddish color, which is kind of in the south-central part of the development, is actually the townhomes. Those will be coming to you as their own preliminary plan at a later date. They don't have the builder identified for that yet, so they don't exactly have the layout yet. So that will be coming back to you at a later date for the details related to that one. And then you've got the commercial node, which is here at the southeast corner. Again, that would be coming back to you at a later date for their preliminary plan associated with that part of the development. So this is just focused on basically the western portion of that, which is shown here in the orange and yellow, which is the single-family home lots, and then also the duplexes or duets. So this gives you an idea of the layout. They've got a primary entrance for the residential area coming off of 300 North. There will be additional entrances that are provided through the commercial development here, but they're not shown here until they get that actually laid out. Because of the regulated drain that runs through this property, it represents a significant challenge to try to provide access over to State Road 39, so the access for the residential is primarily off of 300 North. If you recall, 300 North is, is going to be upgraded over the next few years as part of the Leap District project, which brings traffic all the way from a new interchange all the way over to State Road 39. So as, as development happens in the Leap District and the roads are upgraded, there will be some significant upgrades to 300 North in the next few years. As you can see here, I think the applicant will go through the exact breakdown, because I think the numbers of lots, actually, they did a recalculation, realized that they had the numbers they provided in the application slightly incorrect, because I think I've got 170 single-family home lots and 120 duplex units, and I think it's actually 173 and 118. But I'll let them, I'll let them go when they get through their, through their portion of the presentation, walk through those specifics. I have, just in the, in the staff report, provided you essentially reminders of what the standards were associated with the PUD rezone that was adopted and reviewed previously, and the, all of the lots that you see represented on this plan do meet all of the standards that were, that were proposed and adopted as part of the PUD rezone for both the single-family and duplex lots, including the setbacks and lot sizes. In terms of, let me see where, I don't want to steal all the applicant's thunder and show all their information, but just kinda walk you through, they have provided a series of elevations showing you homes, typical homes that might be in this neighborhood, that meet all of the architectural requirements for the PUD rezone, which would include either a masonry wainscot, which you represented here up to the first floor of the window, and two different siding styles, or a first-floor masonry. So these all just kinda show you where the, what the masonry wainscot would look like, plus the additional material styles. This just gives you an idea what some of the homes might look like in this neighborhood with a variety of colors and trim packages, and variety of siding materials that you see represented on here. And I believe I know, I don't think I've pulled up the duplex, but I know we've seen those, those images before. And then just to give you kind of an idea, actually, let me go back first before I do that. They do have a couple of different amenity areas. You can see up here in the middle of the development, that would be developed as you get to the section of this area. These would be two different amenity areas, whether that playgrounds or parks, with amenities for the residents. And then you can also see the dash lines here would represent trails that they would build throughout the development to connect both the residence with the amenity areas, and then also with the commercial areas that you see here. And then, this just kinda gives you an idea what some of the, they haven't obviously designed exactly what those amenity areas would look like, but this is what their thoughts are, things like dock parks, pickleball courts, playgrounds, et cetera, to be able to provide amenities for both young residents and older residents alike, and also their docks. So this is just a quick, quick review of that, and again, like I said, the preliminary plan is where we get into a little bit further details on the lot layouts in terms of planning perspective, we're looking at, make sure all the streets meet all of the width requirements, all the lots meet all the standards that were proposed in the PUD rezone, we have confirmed, verify that all those things do meet all those requirements. It does get an initial technical advisory committee review, which has been done, and a lot of those comments in that TAC review do suggest that, we'll provide further comments when we get construction plans, and we see further details on utilities. From that perspective, on utilities, the utilities will be coming from the south, and actually, some of our developments later on your agenda are actually developments to the south, so you can get a better idea where the utilities are gonna come from. But both water and sanitary will be coming from the developments to the south into the neighborhood. As you get up at the far north end of the development, they can't serve it all by gravity sewer, so there's a small lift station that'd be going in up here to make sure that the entire development can be served, and then they will also be extending a sanitary sewer gravity over to the intersection with State Road 39 to accommodate as development starts happening further east, down 300 North, as well as the water. So that's just a very quick recap of what the, how the utilities would work, would work for this development, and you'll see additional details on that as we get to the developments to the south, and I can show you a little bit better where that's coming from exactly. That's a real quick recap for you of the preliminary plan. This is a step in the process now that is solely the plan commission action. This is not a recommendation with the council, this is either approval, denial, or continuance from the plan commission. The next step after this, they would be coming in essentially with plans for the first section of development, and they'll walk through how they're planning to section this development out and get going here in a second. So this would be the final public hearing related to the single-family and duet section of this development, and as I mentioned, there would be other public hearings for preliminary plans for the townhomes and the commercial later, as those are designed out. But from this point forward, after this action by the plan commission, everything would be administered to review construction plans for utilities, streets, etc. So with that, in review of the submitted preliminary plan as presented, planning staff finds compliance with the UDO requirements and the PUD requirements for the subject site. Lebanon planning staff recommends approval of the subject preliminary plan contingent on the following conditions: that the applicant adequately address any remaining TAC comments prior to submission of construction plans and secondary plat, and the applicant receives formal drainage approval prior to issuance of permits for site construction and/or submission of secondary plat. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Any questions for Ben before we have the applicant step forward? With that, I'd love for the applicant to join us if you wish.
Thank you. Thanks to Ben, and planning staff, as always, does a great job, and he is a thunder stealer. Beat me to some of these pictures, but appreciate everything the planning staff has done, as always. I always want to get up here and thank the work that they do. They're a great staff to work with, and as always, Ben is incredibly thorough in his staff report, and we appreciate his recommendation. So as you remember, we were here several months ago for the rezone. At that point, our plan simply just had pockets, the lots weren't laid out, just kinda showing where these individual products were to go, and of course, we're a little bit further down the road now, so happy to come back and give you a little more detail, again, but Ben, Ben pretty much beat me to everything. Showing you where the location is, again, a little bit spread out from where we are downtown, 65 over to the west. You can see, you know, nearby where Lily's going and doing all their work now, so this is gonna serve clearly an area that's gonna have incredible need down the road for housing, and we're happy to be there. Some of the development goals we talked about when we were here on the rezone, we want to create a unique mixed-use plan community with a mix of residential, commercial. We're partnering, we're partnering with Beezer on this project, and with, working with Beezer to provide a variety of home styles that can meet the needs of those moving to Lebanon and those wanting to stay here. So by providing different product lines that people can either move up, move out, or, again, allow people that want to stay in Lebanon from another area can move here and have somewhere to go and not, not want to leave the area. Having various product and lots, meeting consumer demand, internal trails and amenities, and we'll see that on the plan here in a minute. And then commercial development, again, we're not there yet on the commercial, and at that time, when we're ready to get there, we'll be back through here with plans on the commercial, but we don't have plans for that yet, nor do we have a user there yet. Same with the townhomes, as Ben mentioned. We're gonna bring water and sewer to that area. Again, you're gonna hear from both Lennar and Spectra after us on their projects, and working with them also to run, run the utilities from further south all the way up to this through their projects as well. And then, of course, working with Indot Lebanon on the traffic impact analysis, which continues to happen. I think Mark is on regular calls with listening in with Indot and how that's kind of an ever-changing situation, but again, we're heavily involved with that process, and I know if Kevin were here, he would, you know, he, there's gonna be an incredible part being played in how our project fits into that traffic study, and it's, it's a behemoth project, and we're glad to be a part of it. This layout you saw earlier, again, getting away from those big pockets and showing you the actual lots. As Ben mentioned, the duets are in the yellow, kind of up, up the middle, and then the orange on the outside are the traditional single-family. Ben is right, our numbers were off slightly, I think on here, it shows 170 single-family and 120 duets. It's actually 173 and 118 duets. Our original zoning allowed for a total of 300 units with some flexibility with the planning department, so we're still under the 300, we're at 291 total units, and I think just, we've had so many plans coming through, I think our engineer was just a little bit behind on updating these numbers, but that's the accurate number, it's 173 of the single-family product and 118 of the duets. One other point I want to make here, and again, you'll see more of this when we come in... in with our first section and work with planning on first section construction drawing. The idea now is to have an island entrance down, coming off of 300, be a fairly significant, I think, four-foot island. The sign will still be on the side, but to provide some more landscaping and a nicer little entryway is what's, what's been decided to go there. So I think that'll help. Again, we always want our entrances to look nice. And adding that island, I think it's going to add that additional landscaping and, and make it a really nice entrance into this residential area. I just wanted to blow up, again, a little bit off because of the numbers, but just wanted to show you the variety of, of lots we're going to have on the single-family, which we have 50-foot lots of about 55 units, 54-foot wide lots, 68 units, and then 60-foot lots with third-car garage option, 47 of those. All of the duets, which are the duplexes, are going to be the same size. Again, they're going to be 40-foot wide lots, but you're essentially two lots are going to make up the duplex product, so 80-foot wide total. This goes into the common areas. It's about almost 40 acres of common space. It's 140-acre piece that we're dealing with, so pretty substantial open space. And again, you know, part of that is, is just by the legal drain that comes in and, and the area that we're working with. But, but we also do want to have an area that has good amenity, good open space, walkability to really bring, bring the community together. This, the importance of this slide, I just want to point out our sections. People get, get concerned about development when they hear, oh, there's 291 homes, like it's going to be there tomorrow. It will not be there tomorrow. At best, we may, we, we may be able to get 10 lots on the ground by the end of the year. That would be our objective, to be able to at least get some model homes in. That's where you see Section 1 down at the bottom there. If that happens, I would expect we'd be right into Section 2 next year. So we'd be done with Section 2 in 2024, and then assume Section 3 would be 2025 and Section 4 would be 2026, would be the plan, essentially every year bringing on another section. So I would anticipate this whole area being built out and sold out till 2027, likely at the earliest, once it gets built out. So we're still dealing with four, five, you know, five years down the road for this whole project to be built out from a residential standpoint. So again, plenty of time for the road improvements to take place. And again, the traffic study is going to speak to, to what needs to be done there. But we're confident that this is going to bring on the, the right amount of product to be able to sell into it, but not have too much product come on and, and have products sitting on the ground stale. So this is our phasing plan as we have it today. And again, that first section is just so that we could hopefully be able to get some lots in to get some model homes going, to get momentum going into next year when we start on the bigger section. This was, we, we talked about architectural standards at the zoning hearing, and I know Ben mentioned in the staff report, we meet all of those architectural standards. The one thing I've underlined here, all front-facing garage doors shall have windows. We've committed to that, but none of the images that you're seeing have that. We don't have, have sketches of those yet. So when you see these, I wanted to underline that for you, just so when you're looking at these images, recognize we've committed to those front-facing garages to have windows, and they will. They're just not representing those windows here on these images. So as Ben showed you, again, you've seen these as he went through them.
And those overhangs look nice, though, don't they?
They're, they're Ben-style overhangs. Yeah, they're, they're, we do have, we do have overhangs. I'm glad you, you caught that. You remember that. So here, the single, again, traditional single-family variety of product. Here's the duets product. And I've got, I don't think Ben showed, showed these, so at least I get something to show you that you haven't seen. So several of these duet products, again, that, that we think are look, going to, going to look fantastic here and be a great product for the community. I put the townhomes in. Again, we're not here for the townhomes, but this was still in my presentation. So left it in here just to see how that, how, how kind of all the products are going to look together. Entry monuments, again, we've got a lot of ideas. We're not there yet. We'll get there. Clearly, as we start working on this first section, we're going to want an entry sign. We'll work with staff, as we always do, clearly on the permitting. And then again, remember, we're going to have that island in the middle. There won't be a sign in the island. It'll still be off to the side, but we're still working through that. Amenities, I kind of blew this up just to show you, again, we're a little further north of the project, those two little amenity areas for dog park, pickleball, an area with some sort of shelter, and a playground, a bench. Again, these are, these are ideas that we've got. But, but when we came to zoning, we talked about all these same things. So we're, we're moving in those same directions. With that, appreciate your time. Be happy to answer any questions you got. Mark Raddison's here. Chris Miller with Beazer. Look forward to your comments and questions. Appreciate it. Thank you.
First, just for me, I don't think we got your name in the record.
Oh, sorry. Adam Mears with Raddison.
Perfect. Thank you very much. I know we've seen you before, but...
Figure I'd just come up and say, hey, guys, it's me. It's me.
Any questions from the commission for the applicant? All right. So with that, I will again, open a public hearing. Again, the public hearing is open. If you wish to make any comments, feel free to step to the podium. Please just let us know who you are, where you live, and keep your comments to three minutes if possible.
Hi there. My name is Linda Delpha, and I live at 2980, North State Road 39. I'm in the second house, okay, sorry. I'm in the second house on the west side, south of 300. So I'm right there at the corner where all this is being proposed. And I'm very much concerned about the traffic situation, how it's going to affect me since I live that close to 300. And is this going to be something that's going to be addressed, really, the 300, you know, proposed, you know, widening, whatever you're going to be doing to it? Is this something that's going to be addressed really before majority of this takes place? Because the traffic's already bad enough now. And I can't imagine what it's going to be like when you had that many more homes and that many more cars coming down 300. They don't stop them. They're five, six, seven in a row, and they roll through that stop sign. They don't, they don't stop and consider that I'm trying to back out of my driveway. And I sit and wait and wait and wait and try to get out. And then I keep hearing things too about, is there going to be a roundabout there at that corner? I keep hearing that from several people. If that's the case, then how's that going to affect my house? Because my bedroom sticks out so close to the road. And how in the world you could put something there? My bedroom would be like this close to that. There's no way. And I have nobody, you know, telling me how that's going to affect me personally, how you're going to deal with residents that are already here right now. That's what I want to hear. What's, what's going to happen to us that are already here, and how it's impacting us. And nobody's telling me anything. And that's what I'm upset about. That I have no idea what my future's going to be, whether I can stay there or not, or whether I'm even going to be able to sell it if I wanted to. Who's going to want to be that close to this situation? And this is the first I've heard about a commercial building being on the corner. I'd never heard that. It's the very first meeting I attended. That was never mentioned. And how that's going to be, you know, impact to? I mean, it's just, I don't know. I just feel like, you know, it's too much for, for where, where the 300 is right now. It's just not wide enough, and I think it can't hold all this traffic right now. So that's my concern right now. Okay?
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Any other public comments for the open public hearing? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And Ben, if you want to come back to the podium there and maybe address?
Yeah, I think there's a number of things that are in the works that are going to address traffic. Certainly, we got a couple other developments on the agenda tonight that are in the same area. There is a significant traffic study going on that's just specific to these three developments, but also a, a much larger traffic study that's looking at kind of the, the entire area universally, given the new interchange and 300 North improvements that are being proposed, the Eli Lilly site and all those things. So yeah, there's, there's a significant study underway to figure out exactly how to address all these things. The interchange is obviously going to direct a lot of traffic that direction, as opposed to just using State Road 39. So you now have two ways to get out of the community. We only have one now. So that makes a big difference on traffic on 39 over time, as being able to get people just directly over to the interstate just to the west from there on 300. So that makes a big difference. But there's also, also going to have to be significant improvements at 300 North that they're still looking at the traffic study to figure out exactly what those are. Most likely, 300 North is going to become a four-lane boulevarded thoroughfare through, through that part of the community to be able to handle all the traffic, as long, along with significant intersection improvements. We don't know yet exactly what the intersection improvements are going to be at 339. They're looking at both the signal and roundabout. Certainly, if it is a roundabout, they can't put it five feet from somebody's house. They'd have to look at siding it so that it has the minimal impacts to anybody that's in the area. And so, and that may be one reason why maybe where it'd be difficult to do a roundabout if there's just not the space to do it. So they're going to have to look at those things, figure out how to cite that in an area where it has the least impact on existing folks. But I do know that probably within the next month or so, there's going to be a temporary signal put there as a part of the whole Eli Lilly project with this traffic that they're going to generate through the area. So that should hopefully slow down people to, and at least in the foreseeable future, with that temporary signal stopping people from flying down State Road 39 into the community. So, but yeah, and even if it's a roundabout or a signal in the future, that is also going to have an effect on how people are moving through that area as well. So, so yeah, there, there are changes coming. We are studying all that traffic to figure out exactly what the improvement's going to make sure that there's enough capacity on those roads for the traffic, and also that the intersections are all working properly, whether it's a signal or a roundabout. So there's a lot of work that's being done. Certainly, as, as Adam mentioned, this is not, this is something that's going to take four, five, six, seven years to build out. So we have some time as they're growing to also be able to grow that infrastructure. But those, those plans are already underway to figure out exactly what's necessary on these roads. And then in terms of intermittent solutions, you know, they'll do a study that'll show how many, you know, do they need a left-turn lane for, for the short term until those improvements happen? Are they going to need a left-turn lane on 300? So they're looking at some of those intermittent solutions to, to be able to accommodate their development until 300 North is improved. So we're looking at some of those short-term solutions, and then also the long-term solutions that are going to be necessary in this area, because there is a lot of things that, that are coming to this area, and that interchange is, is driving a lot of it. So, so yeah, there's, there's a lot of changes coming. We're looking at all those. We'll be making those improvements, or the state will be making those improvements as these developments are happening.
Has NDOT given any indication on the interchange work and timing?
I, I think there, it's supposed to be open by 2027. I think they're targeting the Eli Lilly, once they really get a significant part of the Lilly campus open in '27. I think that's their target date, which is a very aggressive schedule for an interchange. But that's, that's their target, and their commitment to Lilly is that they'd have it open by '27 when their, when their site really starts to open up.
We're very early in the process, but that's the initial kind of target that we're hearing is 2027. And based on the timeline for this specific project, you're looking at, that'd be what, phase three, I think? Phase two, phase three of what we just heard through that proposal. And that would be for the interchange fully open to the interstate. So just to give you a kind of an idea on the timing of that piece. Any other questions or comments from the commission?
Yeah, Ben. I mean, talking to NDOT, I mean, with city talking to NDOT and planning 300 there from 39, at least up, out to the railroad tracks. I mean, is it, is it more probably going to be, it's not going to be coming off the center of 300 now?
Um, it, it may have to move. I mean, obviously, you've got some places where there are homes on the south side, some places with homes on the north side. So my guess is...
There's no, there's no homes on the north side at all, at least up to the railroad tracks.
Yeah, there's, yeah. And it, so I think they would be looking at, and at an alignment that has the least impact on the existing homes that are there. So, so if it needs to shift a tad bit north to make sure that we're not taking as much right-of-way on the south, that's, those are certainly things that they'll look at. They're doing the same thing with some of the other road projects.
Like on Lit Road, right.
Eli Lilly, you can see it, it'll, it'll move depending on where. They need to minimize the impact to existing people out there. So that's the same thing with road segments, intersections. They look at trying, they, they don't want to have to buy people out. So they're looking, trying to cite them so it has the, the, the least impact on the existing uses that are there.
Is that part of what Grayson is seeing, or, yeah?
Raddison.
Grayson, is that what you guys are seeing? I mean, on the south end of the property, probably there's going to be more easement taken on your end?
Yeah, we've, and Kevin's already been working with Mark on the, on the right-of-way for that.
Yeah. Mark Raddison, Raddison Land Development. Yes, we've been in coordination with NDOT, with Kevin and his, and staff, and, and trying to work through, and as well as, as partnering with the other developments in the, in the area that are being proposed. In order to try and help NDOT come up with the best solution that they can in that location and that timing, as, as Ben said, will be the tough part, that we don't know exactly really anything at this point, other than we know they're going to improve it. They haven't been able to give us firm details as, as well as you guys. So, but we're, we're trying to work with them. We've had three scoping meetings with them already, trying to get our traffic study underway now that we know who's around us and, and try and get that to NDOT as well as to Kevin.
The only other thing I have is, I don't even know if I can answer it now, is there going to be an HOA in that development?
Yes, there will be. So there will be an HOA that will take care of all the, so the duets themselves will have a sub-association. So those are maintenance-free. And then the overall community will have an association that will take care of everything from the ponds to cutting the common areas, maintaining the area and all such. So, yes. And it'll be professionally managed as well with a third party.
What's the entry price going to be on the homes?
I don't know yet.
They don't know yet?
350 or so. That's the starting point. And that'd be for the duet, I assume. Yeah, that'd be for the duet, Paravellis.
And the duet's a, a purchase product, correct?
Yes. The entire community is going to be a purchase product.
Very cool. Any other questions? Thank you very much. I think we've gotten some good answers this evening. So with that, I would entertain a motion in regards to docket number 23-54. Slipping back in their notes to read exactly what we have to say here.
I make a motion to approve the subject preliminary plan contingent on the following conditions: that the applicant addresses all remaining City of Lebanon tac comments and stormwater approval. The applicant receives formal drainage approval prior to issuance of permits for site construction and submission of a secondary plat.
Have a motion and a second. Kelly, will you call the roll?
Dan Bayshore?
Yes.
Diane Scott?
Yes.
Corey Kuntz?
Yes.
Heather, Keith Campbell?
Yes.
Heather Schaller?
Yes.
Rebecca Stanton?
Yes.
Lori Gross?
Yes.
Good deal. Thank you very much, guys. Moving right along, we're on to docket 23-55. This is Spectra acquisitions in reference to, shockingly, 300 North.
We're, we're moving directly south of Spring Creek. We just talked about preliminary plan. And this one is actually a step behind them. This is a PUD rezone for 15 acres just on the south side, directly adjacent. So Spring Creek is just to the north here. This is what we're looking at in yellow, and actually, the next project is Corbett Towns, just to the south. So they would actually have a development, this would be a, a multifamily development. It would have both townhomes and apartments on this site. And they did come in for a PUD rezon, as we were looking with, at the site with them and figuring out how best to lay out the site, realized that our multifamily standards didn't quite fit with exactly the, the concept they were proposing. So we suggested them to come through with the PUD, the PUD rezon ordinance to be able to accommodate the, the specific development they were looking at. Yeah, for some of you that have been on the Plan Commission long enough, will recall that this was annexed a few years ago and actually assigned the multifamily zoning district. So it is already zone multifamily. So the use of it for this type of use is already permitted. It's really just looking at some of the specific development standards and making sure that the, the standards associated with the concept they have match up properly. So that's, that's why they want the PUD rezon rather than the standard multifamily, to allow them to, to, to propose the concept that you'll see here, that we'll talk, I'll talk a little bit about, and then let the applicant talk more specifics. Let me zoom in a little bit so we can actually see part of this. So this gives you a little bit of an idea conceptually what they're looking at. You have here a series of townhomes that are on the north end of the property that would face out toward County Road 300 North. And you can see here, they are accommodating some additional right-of-way along here, similar to the development to the north. And then they have, will have a single public road that will run through the development, through the middle of it, down to what would be the Corbett Town development to the south. It's Lenar and connects through a stub street there. So you have a series of three-story townhomes that are along 300 North, and then a series of three-story apartment multi-family buildings to the... buildings to the south. There's one, two, three, seven, seven buildings here to the south with all the appropriate parking you see kind of tucked behind the buildings, along with clubhouse and amenity area you see here along the north end of these apartments. A couple of other things, conceptually, we talked about, and actually, this one doesn't show because I don't have the correct one. They are showing some, they had to have proposed visitor parking spaces along this road here to accommodate the townhomes because they've got a single-car garage, single-car driveway. So we did want to make sure that there was going to be some visitor parking spaces up here that accommodated those townhomes. But then, of course, there's obviously plenty of overflow parking. If they really are having a party, you have to come down here by the clubhouse and/or the apartments. So again, as I mentioned, this is a PUD ordinance. And so what that means then is the Plan Commission's responsibility is to review that ordinance and provide a recommendation on it to the common council. So this is step one. The second step would be preparation, final preparation of that ordinance for consideration by the common council for adoption. That would be step two. Once that PUD ordinance is in place, then they would come back, just like the previous Spring Creek development, for a preliminary plan, where you get a little bit more details about the site itself, locations of utilities, et cetera, how the site will be laid out more specifically. Talking about utilities, again, as I mentioned, the sanitary sewer line is actually south of Corbett Towns. So it's actually going to be coming up and running along the western property line, heading up the western property line to 300 North and crossing over into the Spring Creek development at the north end of the site. So that's actually how the sanitary sewer is coming up. I believe water is following the road from the development coming up towards Spring Creek. So that's generally how the site lays out. They will have access, obviously, off of 300 North and through Corbett Towns development out to State Road 39 to the east here. So walking through the ordinance itself, actually, I did want to point out, because I think they did do a final audit of the ordinance and then had to make a few changes just in the last couple of days based on the actual conceptual layout. So I'll walk through the standards that were proposed. Essentially, really, what they did in the ordinance, there's only a couple of things that they modified from our actual standards of our UDO, and that would be the lot and yard standards and then also the parking standards. I'll let them talk a little bit about their justification for the parking here in a little bit. In terms of lot standards, they did modify some of the front setbacks now adjacent to the arterial, which is actually along 300 North. They are proposing a 20-foot front yard setback, which you kind of see represented here with those towns up actually up closer to the right-of-way line, but it's still a long ways from the actual road where it is now. But if that were to become a four-lane boulevard, as I mentioned before, then those townhomes would have frontage closer to the right-of-way that you see here, which is a lot of the way the townhome developments are. In terms of maximum height, they got 65 feet. They would accommodate the three-story townhomes and three-quarter story apartments. Maximum lot coverage for impervious surface is 75%. So that means you do have 25% open space on the site. In terms of the living areas per dwelling unit, they do have one and two-bedroom apartments, and they have a minimum of 600 square feet for one bedrooms and 725 for two bedrooms. And then in terms of the parking, so our standards right now would require one and a half spaces per one bedroom and two spaces for two bedrooms and up. And what they're proposing is regardless of the number of bedrooms, they would provide 1.75 spaces per unit. So depending on the makeup, they're somewhere at the average between the two of our standards. And I'll let them talk a little bit how they came to the conclusion of 1.75 is the appropriate number for the developments that they've done. This is obviously not their first development. But depending on the breakdown between ones and twos, that's somewhere between our two averages of one and a half and two spaces per unit, depending on the number of bedrooms. The way we've proposed it, and they've just got a standard 1.75 across the board, whether it's a one-bedroom or a two-bedroom. And then the architectural standards, they have proposed architectural standards that primarily match up with our existing architectural standards in the multifamily zoning districts. They do modify them slightly. And one of the primary ones I did want to point out, I think it's on, let's see, it's on the second page of Exhibit C in the ordinance. And right now, we would require essentially 50% masonry. They did want to modify that to allow 30% masonry, but then two material styles, just to allow some additional variation in terms of the design of the buildings. And I'll show you a couple of examples. These, again, are not designed images of the buildings, but this just gives you some precedent images of the concept that they're going for. And then they'll be developing more specific renderings when they come back for the preliminary plan stage, assuming the PUD gets adopted. So this gives you an idea of the type of design that they're going for with this development, both for, these are actually townhomes that you see here, three-story townhomes. Then these all over here are all apartment buildings that you can see here. So this kind of gives you an idea of the concept they're going for with this development. You can see there, most of these do have 30% masonry in certain locations and also two material styles that you see here. So a lot of modulation in the building, which is required, a lot of variation materials, variation colors, which is good, looking for creative and unique designs for the buildings, which is great. So that is a quick rundown. As I said, there is, the PUD ordinance did have a couple of changes from what was sent to you last week that I just, I quick ran through for you here tonight, a couple of modifications of some of those setbacks. But other than that, it's all very similar to what you saw. So they did just have to make a couple of modifications based on their concept plan. And that's what's before you tonight here, is that slightly adjusted PUD ordinance. So that's a real quick rundown of that. Let me go back to my staff report, make sure I've covered. In terms of decision criteria for a PUD rezone, the first is the extent to which the proposal fulfills the requirements and intent of the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan identifies this area for residential uses. And the residential land use designation of comprehensive plan suggests it could be for single-family detached housing, townhomes, duplexes, and multifamily housing of all levels of housing value. And certainly, this proposed development by the applicant fits within that land use designation. Second is the current conditions and character of current structures and uses in each zoning district. This PUD rezone is in an area of the community that contains a mix of commercial institution and variety of residential uses. The proposal by the applicant is consistent with current conditions and characters within the area. Most desirable use of the land, as I mentioned, this is already zoned multifamily. And so this would represent a desirable land use, given the existing zoning of the site and the proposed PUD rezone. The next one is conservation of collective property values throughout the city of Lebanon as a whole. And suggested is not anticipated, the development proposed by the applicant won't have a negative impact on property values throughout the city. The proposal represents the highest quality design and should have a positive impact on values overall. Responsible growth and development. The proposed site is, I would call it, an infill locations, 15 acres in an area where there's already other development, at the north end of the community, near the hospital, and our primary shopping area along Lebanon Street. Additionally, the proposed development is sandwiched between two other proposed residential developments, which we've already talked, we've talked about one tonight and we'll talk about the other one here in a moment, that are to the north and south of the subject property. The site will be served by utility extensions running through the proposed Corbett Towns development to the south, thus representing responsible growth and development. With that, then, staff conclusion. In review of the submitted PUD rezone and ordinance as presented, staff has found, finds compliance with the UDO, established design criteria and recommends the Plan Commission for the planned unit development rezone and ordinance to the common council with a favorable recommendation. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Good deal. Thank you, Ben. Any questions from the commission for Ben?
I do have a question. On the clubhouse, what's the clubhouse going to involve?
I'll let them talk about that here in a moment.
Okay.
What a great segue into the applicant joining us at the microphone.
All right.
Ben, that means you have to move.
Yep, I'm going to pull up their presentation for them.
Justin Ferris with Spectra. First of all, thank you, Ben. Thank you, City Planning, for having us here. We're excited to be here. I'm going to give just a brief introduction and then hand it over to our A-team to talk about the development in more detail. I'm Justin Ferris, the founder of Spectra and managing partner. We're a multifamily development and management company based out of Indianapolis. We have communities throughout the country, but we're based in Indiana. We're really excited about this opportunity, what we consider in our backyard. So we're just down the street in Indianapolis at our corporate office, but very excited about the growth and the opportunity here. And I'll just say, I think it's a great time as well with some of the other groups that are in here this evening to be able to work with them and plan this together, right? So working with Gradison and Lennar and a few of the other groups, I think it's very good timing to work together as a team and make sure that we, you know, work well with the city and accomplish the goals and really understand the needs of the community as well. And I don't take it lighthearted, you know, the comments that get brought up as far as traffic and those concepts. We want to make sure that we're addressing that, we're being a good neighbor. But we're here for the long haul. So we own and operate our communities. So we have a management team that we'll put in place. We've got great capital partners behind us who have been with us since the very beginning. So again, just very excited to be here and honored to be here and present this opportunity in front of you guys. So with that said, I'd like to hand it over to Abby, who heads up our development team, and she'll get a little bit more in-depth in the actual project itself and answer any questions that you guys may have.
Thank you. Go to the next slide here. As Ben mentioned, we are located directly to the south of County Road 300 North. We have approximately 15 acres of land directly to the south of Spring Creek and just to the north of the Lennar Development, Corbett Towns. We did put in the PUD 250 maximum dwelling units. In the way the site plan currently sits, we are at 230 multifamily units, which consists of one and two-bedroom apartments. This is a little bit updated from what Ben showed, and I can probably zoom in a little bit here so you can see it a little better. To the left-hand side would be facing north, so County Road 300 North and the Spring Creek development. These are the townhomes that Ben mentioned. We have two blocks of 10, so 20 for rent townhomes. They would be three stories with a single-car garage and a single-car driveway. We are anticipating them to be two bedrooms, two and a half baths. We did add some visitor parking just directly to the south of these townhomes, in addition to our surface detention to the south of that, and an additional dumpster over here as well. Our entrance does align with the Spring Creek curb cut off of 300 North. And our townhome is a little more realigned from what Ben pulled up on the screen. And you can see we added some additional parking here as well. The clubhouse is approximately 5,000 square feet, would consist of resident amenities such as a fitness center, resident lounge, leasing office, bike storage, which would be secured, a dog wash. And then outdoor amenities would be a dog park, outdoor grilling stations, fire pits, things like that. We have seven multifamily buildings consisting of 30 units each, which would be 210 with the 20 up here, which would be 230. We would tie into the Corbett Towns development directly to the south. As Ben mentioned, the water would come up the public street and the sanitary sewer on the west-hand side. These are slightly different than what Ben pulled up, as well as we've continued to work through the design here. We are anticipating this to be more of a modern urban farmhouse style. We feel it fits better with the community and better with the branding that we've established for the community as well. So your Board and Batten-style siding, the contrast between the black and the white facade, corrugated roof awnings, things like that are what we would anticipate to see in our architecture as we move forward through design. With that, if you guys have any questions, we're happy to answer.
I do have two. Just real quick, Abby, if you could, for the record, can we get your last name as well?
Wilson.
Thank you very much. And then the townhome units, are those going to be leased units or purchased units?
They will be for rent townhomes.
Okay.
Yes.
Good deal. Commission, any questions for Abby? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
With that, we'll again open the public hearing. So the public hearing is officially open. If you have any comments, please feel free to step to the microphone. Please try and limit to three minutes each, not repeating someone before you.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Phil Ledlow. I'm a real estate broker. I'm helping Janaye Simmons voice her opinion on some of these projects because they are at her, right at her property lines. So we were more prepared to talk about Corbett Towns. This was kind of a surprise to her as far as seeing the first plan. And probably the main thing is just the transition from on the property line of their development to her property. And I don't want to, like, trying to restrict the new tenants in that development from coming into her property. She's got an old farm barn. She's got an old farmhouse, chicken coop, kind of the stuff that kids would love to go through and get hurt in. So probably just asking for, you know, from the get-go, for some transition landscaping that's high and even a fence to delineate the property line to show the people that just, that move in there that just don't understand rural farm ground, hey, you're crossing the property line here. You know, that's where you need to stop. So just wanted to voice that concern. We'll be back again when Corbett Towns comes up, so we'll go back over it again. But anything else?
No.
You've already covered everything else about the traffic. Have you heard anything about the traffic? You've heard about the traffic.
Nope. Topic.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public before we address those? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And Ben, can you address, is there any type of physical delineation there?
Yeah, let me go back up to, just use their image. So multifamily to other single-family residential does require a buffer yard. So they will be providing the required buffers between this property and any of the neighboring properties to the east, which is actually up on this one. So they'll be requiring, providing all those required buffers and then also parking lot perimeter landscaping. So there's going to be a pretty significant amount of landscaping there. What the applicant addressed, if they're, I mean, I don't know that they're planning a fence right now necessarily along that property line. We don't necessarily require a fence. That'd be something that they would be voluntarily committing to if they wanted to work with the neighboring property owners on that. But they would be providing a pretty significant buffer between multifamily and single-family residential on that east side and actually, I believe, also on the west side as well.
Yeah, I believe on the plan, we also keep the existing tree line buffer as it currently shows on the engineering site plan. So that's how we currently have it shown in regards to a fence. We would be open to it.
Yeah.
So.
Okay.
As we develop the community, we'd be more than happy to work with the neighbors. And if there's additional buffer fencing or something that we could put in, we'd be more than happy to put that in.
Thank you for those comments. Any questions? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion in reference to docket number 23-55, which is the Spectra PUD.
I make a motion to forward the planned unit development rezone and ordinance to the common council with a favorable recommendation.
One second.
You have a motion and a second. Kelly, will you roll for us?
Dan Bayshore?
Yes.
Diane Scott?
Yes.
Corey Kuntz?
Yes.
Keith Campbell?
Yes.
Heather Schaller?
Yes.
Rebecca Stanton?
Yes.
Lori Gross?
Yes.
That motion does carry. Thank you, guys, very much. Another great development coming to the community. With that, we're going to change the guard a little bit here. Ben was getting a little tired. I'm going to take him away from the podium for a moment. We'll move on to, I believe, our last docket of the evening, which is 23-56. This is Lennar Homes and a preliminary plan approval for the PUD in that area.
Good evening again, Plan Commission. Not moving too far, literally the property just directly south of the Spectra development. If we pull up the screen, we can reorient everyone. So the Spectra property that we just discussed is to the north here. The Corbett Towns development that we're discussing the preliminary plan tonight is just to the south in yellow here, State Road 39 to the east, Stonegate Meadows, senior living to the south, Meadow Wings Neighborhood to the west, and Witham Hospital and Crown Point, senior living across the street along the east side. You guys may recall, this was before you in June, the PUD rezone that came before you and did get a favorable recommendation from you to the council. And the council did adopt the PUD rezone at the July 10 Plan Commission meeting. So here tonight, again, is the preliminary plan, the exact same process that we kind of just went through with the Spring Creek development to the north. So you had the PUD rezone, which kind of gave you the conceptual design and- So you had the PUD rezon, which kind of gave you the conceptual design and ideas of the neighborhood. The preliminary plan now gets more into the weeds of the overall site design and layout when it comes to streets, sidewalks, utilities and infrastructure, drainage, lot sizes, landscaping, all that kind of fun stuff. So in front of you on the screen right now is a copy of the preliminary plan, and we'll just kind of walk through this here a little bit. We will touch on some of the PUD details that you did approve. But this is a 96-unit townhome community that does have an entrance along State Road 39. The townhomes run along both the north and south sides of what would be the extension of Monarch Lane. I'm going to go back a screen, and I'll zoom in just a bit so that you can see, we have the Meadowwing subdivision that is to the west, and there's always been a stub street ever since that neighborhood was developed with the intention of this road continuing on to the east. And so that's what Lennar is proposing with the Corbett Towns, is the extension of Monarch Lane to the east over to State Road 39. We do have a stub street to the south that does have a hammerhead that's being proposed so that a fire truck could make the five-point turn, or maybe six-point, I don't know, I've never driven a fire truck, but the fire department has signed off that that is sufficient enough for them to be able to drive down the stub street and make a turnaround there. And then we do have the street here in the middle, which is labeled as Street A, that heads up through the Spectra Development that you just saw. So this is where those two neighborhoods would connect. One of the great things about these three developments is they are utilizing the same engineer. Y Engineering is the engineer for Corbett Towns, for the Spectra Development, and for Spring Creek, which makes infrastructure, makes it convenient for that infrastructure. So there was talk about the water infrastructure heading north up Street A through the middle of the Spectra Development, then the sanitary sewer would actually be along the western portion here and heading up alongside, all going up north to the Spring Creek Development. So before you tonight, again, the Corbett Towns, 96 townhomes. Each townhome will be two-story with a two-car garage. Each unit would also have two parking spaces within the driveway. So we're talking about four off-street parking spaces per townhome. Then the applicant has also provided some on-street parking. Let me scroll back up with the trees in the way, it's kind of hard to see. So we have off-street parking spaces along Street A designated here. There's one, two, three, four spaces here. We have additional spaces along the road on the western side of the parcel, and then we also have additional off-street spaces, or on-street spaces to the eastern side. So significant amount of parking for this unit, this development, when you factor in, there's 10 spaces per townhome plus additional off-street parking. Again, this PUD rezon, the development standards that were set, all the setbacks, the lot frontages, perimeter and side setbacks. The applicant has proposed a 20-foot landscape buffer along both the north side here and the western side of the development that abuts existing residential uses so that the perimeter would include six trees and 15 shrubs per every 100-foot. They also intend to maintain as much of the existing landscaping that currently exists around the property. The applicant is proposing architectural design, and I can pull up the elevation here. Again, this is a conceptual exhibit, a character exhibit of precedent of what could be designed, but they are proposing a minimum of three building materials on the front facade, including but now limited to bricks, stone, horizontal siding, board and batten, shaker siding. The front of elevation of each home will have a minimum masonry requirement of wainscoting up to the window sill of the lowest level window. I touched on the two-car garage, and the preliminary plan that has been presented does reflect all applicable architecture and landscape standards as detailed in the PUD. As Ben mentioned, with a preliminary plan, it does undergo a secondary TAC review, so the City of Lebanon Utilities Sewer and Water Division and Electric Division has had the opportunity to provide more comments. The Stormwater Division, Lebanon Fire did not have any additional comments. The City of Engineer had some additional comments. And then Planning Staff did, we did have our preliminary review, or preliminary plan review of this, which I'll kind of touch on a few of those. All internal streets do meet the local residential street standards, as outlined in the Lebanon City standards. All proposed streets shall have a no parking, except in the designated off-street parking zone, so it'll be just those few areas where identified that there would be on-street parking. Excuse me. A street lighting plan has, should, shall be provided and will be constructed and conform to all UDO ordinances and requirements. All the proposed sidewalks meet the applicable pedestrian network standards as proposed in the, or as detailed in the Lebanon City standards. We touched on the landscape buffering. Again, 20-foot buffers along the north and western sides. They will mimic that buffer along the State Road 39 side, but that will also include a three-to-six-foot berm along that western portion, and I can show you that as well. Let me scroll on over. So along State Road 39, we'll still have the same landscape buffer requirements, but we'll also be implementing a three-to-six-foot berm that would add some undulation and some, a little more character to the entry along State Road 39. Traffic, again, we've talked about traffic several times tonight in this area. This development is no different. The majority of the traffic from this area will exit out the State Road, is presumed to exit out the eastern side of the development onto State Road 39, up until the point where County Road 300 would be improved or developed, as well as the Spectra Development. Residents in this area could head to the north to get to County Road 300 and then head west out to the new interchange, but again, that's something that's a few years off. So the ingress and egress would be both on the east side and then the west side of this particular development. But again, all traffic standard, or all traffic impact studies are being conducted for Corbett Towns, for Spectra, for Spring Creek. Those are all being tied into the traffic studies that are being conducted by NDOT, by the city, by the state, by Eli Lilly. So this entire area is being considered due to the improvements of both, or of both of all the residential development that's being proposed and the commercial development, industrial development with Eli Lilly and the LEAP project. So in review of the submitted preliminary plan, Lebanon Planning Staff does find compliance with the UDO standard, UDO Unified Development Requirements of the subject site, and the Plan Commission does recommend approval of the subject preliminary plan contingent on the following two conditions. One, that the applicant adequately addresses any remaining City of Lebanon technical advisory comments prior to the submission of a secondary plat, and that the applicant receives formal drainage approval prior to the issuance of permits for onsite construction and the submission of a secondary plat. And I'd be glad to provide any more details or answer any questions should you have and the applicants here tonight, and might have a presentation for you as well that I may have stolen some thunderhella off of, but it's what we do.
I do have a question for you, Matt.
Yes, ma'am.
What's the approximate distance between 300 and that entrance-exit area from Corbett Towns to 39? I'm trying to visualize the distance between.
Quarter mile. Sure.
Let me see here. So if we pull up the image on the screen here, we can see the intersection of State Road 39 and County Road 300 North here where my cursor is. Kind of highlight the area for you. So the entrance to Corbett Towns would be significantly south. I'm sorry, I don't know the exact distance in feet, but there was, it's more than substantial. Our city standards do require at least 150-foot separation, which would be well up to the north of where the Corbett Towns entrance will be.
Like a quarter mile?
Yeah, it'd be approximately a quarter mile, because 250 is off the bottom of the screen.
Okay.
That would represent a half a mile from 250 to 300. So maybe, maybe between an eighth and a quarter.
Yeah, somewhere in there.
I'm trying to imagine coming out of that neighborhood and trying to go north on 39, taking a left turn.
It's just beyond the hospital. So if you go that back way into like the senior services, that's where Crown Point entrance is.
Got it. Okay.
Any other questions from the commission for Matt?
I have one, and this may be a little bit left-fieldish. In terms of parking ordinances within the city, so if one of the adjacent neighborhoods were interested in prohibiting parking like overnight, that's not something currently contemplated in any city ordinance, right? The on-street parking prohibited certain hours unless marked or?
I think we have, we potentially have a few of those maybe in school zones. I'm not familiar with any in a residential neighborhood. That would be something that would probably need to start with a Board of Works approval and then potentially an ordinance from council. And Rob or Ben may be able to confirm that, but when it comes to parking requirements, whether it's restricting parking, speed limits, I'm not familiar with any that restrict overnight parking.
Yeah. But just as an example, an HOA wouldn't have grounds to prohibit that sort of thing, right? Because it would be a city road, so an HOA can't just say, hey, you can't park here.
If it's a private road, the HOA would have that ability, but all of the roads in this area are public streets and would require Board of Works and City Council approval to make any speed limit changes or parking restrictions.
Okay, perfect. Left field, like I said.
Good at that.
That's how you think.
Any, any other questions from the commission? Would the applicant care to step forward?
I don't think we're going to go through all of them.
Okay.
I might grab some drawings off of there. If you need.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Oh, good evening. My name's Kevin Sumner with Y Engineers. With me today, I've got Keith Lash with Lennar Homes. I'm not going to spend too much time, it's getting kind of late, and really, Matt kind of just took, took everything over, so appreciate that. Staff has, staff has done a really, really good job of this, helping us out. Yeah, I'm really, basically, we're okay with any of the conditions, contingencies that they've made, and really, I think we're here just to answer any questions and go through any problems.
Questions from the commission? Saying true to what I asked the rest, so this is townhome product, would it be leased or purchased? Purchased. Purchased product. Perfect. Any other questions from the commission of the applicant? Ben's already meandering.
I just thought maybe to go back to Diane's question about somebody looking to try to turn left on 39. I think what may end up happening if people realize that it's a challenge to try to turn left to go north out of there, they probably won't going through Spectra's development up to 300 and out that way, because that would take them then over to 339 where there would be either a signal or a roundabout or whatever it is at that intersection, rather than trying to sit out there and wait, try to turn left there. So the good thing about this is there's two, there's, well, there's three ways technically to get out, but two ways to try to get north out of this development. I think that's what's going to happen, and if they, first time they sit there for a couple minutes, they're going to go the other way through Spectra's development.
Thank you.
No other questions for Kevin from the commission? All right. For the last time this evening, we will go ahead and open a public hearing. This is a public hearing. Feel free to step to the microphone. Please limit your comments to three minutes if possible, and just make sure we know who you are and where you live.
Good evening. I'm Phil Ledlow. I'm a real estate broker, working with Janay Simmons. She lives at 2880 North State Road 39. Her south property line is, joins the north property line of Corbett Towns. She's got a lot of concerns about the privacy between her property and the new build and the, the property line standards, which Thunderstealer Matthew kind of went over that 20-foot buffer. That is nice, appreciate that, and it's got trees and bushes, appreciate that. However, she needs a little more privacy and to keep people from coming into her yard. And we, we'd wonder if the Commissioners could help us, support us in our request to have the mound come, come on across the north side of the property as well, with the trees and bushes on top of the mounds. The three-foot, six, three, three-foot to six-foot mound that they're going to put on 39, if they could bring that on across the north side as well, between her property and that. And part of that reason is because the, the back setback line of, the rear setback line of these buildings is 30 feet from her property, and that 20-foot buffer is in that 30-foot, 30-foot build line. So that's very close to have a two-story product next, you know, overlooking her property within 30 feet. And if the mound was there with the trees on top of the mound, it would give a little bit more privacy, especially from the two-story perspective from the townhomes.
We were also going to ask for fencing.
And, and once again, some fencing to delineate the property line there so that they, so that strangers, visitors to, to the townhomes don't go wandering up on the mound and then wander into her yard and headed toward her barn or her chicken coop. Something to delineate that property line so that they know they're off their property and on her property. She could get four-by-eight sheets of plywood and put up no trespassing signs, but, but, we want to look nice here. So that, that's just some thoughts there. So we'd ask your support in that request of the developer for that. You know, the fencing can be, be whatever minimal to just delineate the property line. Even if it's farm fence, that's along that property. Just something to, so the strangers know there's where you stop. So. The other question we have is, it goes back to Spring Creek. Is there a rental restriction going to be in Spring Creek or not?
We are for sale.
For sale only? Is there going to be any rental restrictions though?
That would be up to the city and...
No, I think it actually would be up to the...
Yeah, we, we can, we can address that afterwards, or you can with them afterwards, since we're on to the...
That was just a question.
We're on to the new one. Sorry.
You answered it on everything else, so we've got everything else. Side note, if, if they do go along with putting the mound on the north side between her property and the, and the townhomes, there's some, there's a series of four manholes, storm manholes along that, in that 30-foot build line, right at that 30-foot build line, that would probably have to go to the north side of that mound to catch any sheeting, storm drainage from her property, not ponding on that, on the, on the north side of that So the manholes are already in their plan, they're on their plan right now. It'd just be a matter of some kind of pushing them to the north a little bit so that they could catch some of the rainwater coming, coming off of her property and not just sitting on her property up against the mound. Her property elevation, according to their elevations, her property is like 936, and that's about the same elevation across Corbett Towns, except for when you get farther south to the detention pond, then it goes down to 934. The property to the north of hers, there's a total of 12 property owners there, and about the third property parcel north of hers is at 930, 939. So she's at the lower end of everybody else that's at the higher end elevation-wise, and so everybody has some sheeting that comes all the way to the south across her property. So just a few, few notes to consider, and appreciate your support on it.
Thank you, Phil.
Any questions for us? Hello?
I've actually got one.
Yes, true.
What if the chicken crosses the street?
Road.
I think there's a gun, Lord Minsp, but...
Thanks, Phil. I appreciate it.
You're always thinking.
I was holding on to that one for like three minutes. All right. Thank you very much. And we can obviously get... All right. Thank you very much. And we can obviously get that one addressed, the one question there. Any other public comments? Public hearing is still open till right now. So I will close the public hearing. Public hearing is officially closed. Commission, any questions, comments in regards to those? Matt or Ben, do you have any feedback?
I, I don't necessarily have any additional information. Phil and Janay had some requests. I think that's more of the applicant. I don't think the city has any desire to implement any more standards other than our landscaping requirements that we're committed to during the PUD rezone process with the buffer that's been proposed. But I can let the applicant address any additional delineation that they would like to make there or can make there, especially considering the drainage that is situated in that area. But if you have any other questions, I'm happy to answer those before you make your motion.
Kevin, do you have any feedback on the?
Yeah, so the, there's an existing farm fence along that property line. It also has trees in it, and we were trying to keep those trees, and we didn't really plan on removing the fence either. So there is kind of a, a line there already, and then we'd be planning the extra landscaping. The problem with putting a mound in the back there is really just what they said was that the drainage comes on to our property, and so we don't really want to block drainage. And so that's, that kind of makes that difficult, putting a mounding in.
Okay. Questions, comments?
Throwing out ideas, maybe this is for the applicant also. Rather than a mound, would there be potential for a privacy fence that could be done in addition to the landscaping to provide some additional delineation and some additional privacy, just kind of throwing out that? Because I would agree, the mound would be a challenge, because if that water already comes across there, you're essentially putting up a dam for the water, so you probably wouldn't want to do that. But a fence, a fence wouldn't necessarily do that and provide some additional privacy, additional landscaping. But yeah, we would definitely, would like to see them preserve the existing tree line that's there, the mature trees. So just, just throwing out a couple of thoughts for the Plan Commission applicant to consider.
We can't require something like that, can we? Add it to the comments?
Uh, I believe you could. Trying to see, I don't know that I have any relatively new pictures that show that fence line area.
Google Maps. It's always something.
With a fence line built into the trees, because I used to have that behind my house, but. It's hard to avoid it. Traffic, but you can tell that already there, I would think.
I'll get there.
My concern would be if we had that conversation about a privacy fence, would that put in jeopardy the tree line? Because I would rather have the mature trees than a fence line myself.
Right. If we can pull up the, the screen, we got the Google Maps image showing the northern boundary here. So this is Janay's property that Janay and Mr. Ledlow were referring to, and this is the Corbett Towns. This would be the, the north side of the Corbett Towns. So the, there would be the 20-foot buffer that would be planted from the existing tree line or in the vicinity of this existing tree line, and then the 10-foot setback from there to the building, the rear of the buildings.
And then, so then the intent would be that that existing tree line that we see, we see there would remain intact. Obviously, this, I mean, it's a Google image, so it could have changed, but.
And the, the separation from the homes to the property, the closest point would be more in the 45-feet range. So we've got the, the natural trees, and then we've got our, in our buffer area with the landscape, and then we have a drainage easement after that.
Okay.
So it's, it's a pretty, pretty good distance off of the property line.
Perfect. Thank you for pulling that image up. I appreciate it. Any questions for Kevin before we have him sit down? All right, so then I would entertain a motion on docket 23-56, which is in regards to the townhome development known as Corbett Towns.
I make a motion to approve the preliminary plan contingent on the following conditions. All TAC comments are addressed, and they receive stormwater approval.
So we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Oh, second.
We've got a motion and a second. Thank you very much. Kelly, will you take the role?
Okay. Dan Bayshore?
Yes.
Diane Scott? Corey Koots?
Yes.
Keith Campbell?
Yes.
Heather Schaller?
Yes.
Rebecca Stanton?
Yes.
Lori Gross?
Yes.
That motion does carry. Thank you guys very much. I believe that marks the end of both the old and new business that I have on the books. So I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I didn't. I should ask their picture.
Heather does the motion. We've got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify with an aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you very much.